March 12, 2015, meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A roll call and recognition of visitors.
This evening's visitors include Charles Hammer and Melody Rail.
Thank you. We've come to the time in the agenda for the open forum. It's a section of the board agenda. It's a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door of each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and not address matters related to individual personal matters with the college. We have one registered speaker tonight, Charles Hammer. If you would come to the podium, please. And for the audience and the record, if you would again state your name, Charles, and your address, that would be helpful.
Okay. I came here tonight to report a crime wave.
Charles, if you could state your address, please, in your name.
Forty-eight twenty-nine Black Swan Circle in northern Shawnee. I've lived there fifty years.
Thank you.
I came here tonight to report a crime wave. You members of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees, plus all the teachers and students you serve, are major victims. The crime is easy tax abatement for wealthy corporations in all its multiplying forms. It's a theft because though it was authorized by the Kansas Legislature, our community college never agreed to surrender education funding to private corporations. In December, my hometown city council, Shawnee, voted to give away about seventeen million dollars or 100 percent of the new property taxes over twenty years for the proposed Landing Shopping Center, plus other free taxpayer-supplied benefits. Nearly half that loss will come from the Shawnee Mission School District budget, about 10 percent from your community college, yet more from Parks and the Library District. Vacant shopping center buildings are rife all over Johnson County, including Giant Metcalf South and now the defunct Mall of the Great Plains. But the private developer wants money for his landing. Sadly, it seems the almighty Creator got the geography wrong at the landing location. It's steep, so to build a 55-foot retaining mall nearly five stories high and grade the site, among other costs, the corporate owner will take education share of that seventeen million dollars. Meanwhile, Shawnee will collect 1 percent of the estate sales tax on every dime spent at the landing, and not just there. The state pays all Johnson County cities 1 percent of the sales tax on purchases within their boundaries. That is more than 10 percent of the total state sales taxes we pay. What a deal for cities. They can go, "We give away your education funding, and it makes us rich." Guess what the city of Miriam rakes in when a Mercedes or BMW sells at one of their many taxpayer-subsidized car dealers along I-35? A hundred thousand dollar car means one thousand dollars in sales tax for Miriam. On one occasion, Miriam used eminent domain to condemn a low-price dealer and force sale to a premium dealer. But our cities must compete for these corporations, don't they? For instance, the Bayer Animal Health Corporation demanded from Shawnee a 75 percent tax abatement on a ninety-million-dollar project. Bayer threatened to move to Lenexa if the city council refused, so Shawnee added up to 75 percent, more than half of which was school and community college money. Thus, the education tax had to be higher on all other residents, those ordinary citizens who pay 100 percent. Bayer whipsawed Shawnee by threatening to move, and still Shawnee won the new building and the sales tax. From this intermunicipal strife, both the school district and your community college took a loss. If Bayer had been forced to pay their taxes like everybody else, the district and your college would have benefited in either location. Bayer won other abatements in 1962, 2002, and 2005. It never ends with that company, which I nominate as Johnson County Corporate Welfare Queen. The biggest argument for giving tax abatements is everybody's doing it, which led to the Lenexa-Shawnee conflict. That would make good sense if the debater were backing a federal law to stop all the giveaways. Such a law would return our nation to the era of free enterprise capitalism, when business chose sites for efficiency, not bribes of taxpayer dollars. But such laws do not interest our legislature, chambers of commerce, and city councils. No crime of burglary can equal the stealth of these tax giveaways. Here at your Board of Trustees meetings, every year you must come up with a budget, you set a tax rate, and citizens must pay year after year. We know we are paying. But the news story that told us of the seventeen-million-dollar giveaway for the Landing Shopping Center, that may be all we ever hear about the landing tax loss. Year after year, taxpayer money quietly will be ladled out to the landing. Citizens will never again be reminded they are paying the landing's tax bill. For that reason, I ask three things of this Board of Trustees. First, break through the curtain of stealth. Each year, order your financial managers to list all those who escaped your college tax, also how much they avoid that year and in total. Send that list out to every media outlet, this paper right here, the Campus Ledger, Public School Principals, and PTAs. As a former journalist, I can guarantee your list would make the paper. This very afternoon, you could vote on that issue. Find out what these giveaways are costing you. Second, advocate for a Kansas law giving governmental units forced to pay for tax abatements a vote equal to their proportionate loss. That would give you trustees only 10 percent of the power to grant or deny, but the Shawnee Mission School District, for instance, would wield nearly 50 percent. Now neither the school district nor the college have any voice. Without even consulting you, city councils, take your education funding and run. Third, organize. Start bringing together all the losers from tax abatements, the Johnson County Library District, Community College, Park District, Blue Valley, and DeSoto School Districts. Reach out to Topeka and Wichita Public Schools. It seems Kansas is out to starve education in this state. This would be among the better ways to fight back. Thank you.
Mr. Hammer, thank you for your comments. The items that you've listed really are fundamental to good public policy. I do believe that it's an issue that has been discussed certainly previously and will continue to be discussed as developers work with city officials. And that's basically where the issue begins, is with city governments as they decide what kind of development comes into their communities. We do have discussion. Our county assessor also plays a role in that process in identifying what the impact may be to each governmental agency. But your points are well made. I'm sure that you've researched the numbers for accuracy, but I will say to you that our staff does address each of those when they come about because they do have an impact. And we try to balance what the long-
I'd like to give as many copies to the board members if I may.
Sure, that'd be fine. What the long-term result is over a period of time to the college. So thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Thank you. The next item is the awards and recognitions. We do not have any for the board meeting. That doesn't mean we don't have a lot of awards and recognitions because they occur every day, but we have none for this board meeting. Mr. Redmond is not present, I understand from the Student Senate, so we have no Student Senate report. Mr. Carter, you just arrived. If you would like another... He just left. Okay. So he just came in from Topeka. We're going to give him a chance to catch his breath. So if we could, let's move to committee reports and recommendations under seven. We'll come back to the lobbyist report. Collegial steering did not meet in March. The day that we had scheduled was in conflict with a negotiation session, and many of our people would be on both sides, would be gone to the negotiation session, so we did not have a collegial steering. And with that, Trustee Drummond, Human Resources.
Thank you very much, Chair. We did not have a meeting as well. Our business was not so important, and we couldn't do it in April. So we'll have a meeting then, I assure you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Learning Quality, Trustee Cross.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met March 2, 2015, in this room. I attended in person with Trustee David Lindstrom, among others. Emily Bearman and Beth Edmonds gave presentations that day. The committee did vote and recommend to the board for a full vote that it's a recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the administration's recommendation to allow contract negotiations for groups to perform in the Carlson Center during the 2015-16 academic year, as shown subsequently in the board packet.
Right, so move. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any questions? Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And if I may just comment, Mr. Chair, Ms. Bearman, in her presentation, did a fabulous job, as they always do with the Performing Arts Series. I did remember commenting that if I didn't know any better, I would have said that it was a four-year institution who was putting forth such a production, and it's very impressive. We also had a presentation by Beth Edmonds, the Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee, who presented curriculum items that have been approved since the Learning Quality Committee's last met. Changes included the addition of new courses, course modifications, course deactivations, et cetera. Curriculum changes were approved as presented, and Beth is now requesting approval from the Board of Trustees. A complete list of the changes can be found in the March 12, 2015 board packet. There was also a presentation by Janice Blansett that day, who shared a PowerPoint presentation that included information about the college's adult education program that began in 1984, and her main focus was to introduce and request endorsement for the AOK application. Kansas Board of Regents, in partnership with the Kansas Department of Commerce, is now implementing the Accelerating Opportunity Initiative in Kansas, the AOK Program. And this initiative allows career and technical education and earning a GED to be completed concurrently. The AOK Program Opportunity addresses the needs of non-traditional students and helps them to move more quickly into higher-paying, high-demand careers. The courses are team taught by a technical professional and an adult basic education faculty member. The college is reimbursed at a fully funded tiered rate for AOK courses by the state of Kansas. The AOK Pilot Program will begin with the Health Care Pathway, which will consist of thirteen credit hours from the following courses: Basic Life Support, Certified Nursing Assistant, Home Health Aid, Introduction to Psychology, and Human Development. The pilot will begin on March 31, 2015. Welding is being discussed as the next AOK Program to develop. So therefore, Mr. Chair, it is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the Accelerating Opportunity Kansas AOK FYI 2015 Provider Application, as shown subsequently in the board packet.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Any questions of Trustee Cross?
One final point, if I may, Mr. Chair. There is a Performing Arts Series. It's stated confidential, although it's in the board packet. I assume I may talk about it. A series of events for the upcoming year is in our board packet and I assume available to the public for the upcoming year.
They will. And I will say that Dr. Sobchak is going to speak a little bit more on the AOK Program. We, at the K-Board meeting yesterday, heard a lot about collaboration, and so there will be more coming on that with Dr. Sobchak's report. Let's move on to the management report. Trustee Musil.
Thank you, Chair Cook. The Management Committee met at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, March 4. I believe both Trustee Stewart and Trustee Lindstrom were there with me and the staff members. There are a total of twelve recommendations to be presented this evening. I'm going to put nine of those as one motion later because they are ongoing annual renewals for on-call services on campus that I'll talk about. The first recommendation is the renewal of the annual license agreements with Microsoft. The purpose of this RFP was to establish an annual Microsoft Enrollment for Education solution agreement, and the license agreement allows for all college computers and servers to have the latest versions of Microsoft applications such as Desktop 365, Office Project Pro, SharePoint, and others. It is a recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the renewal of the annual contract for Microsoft Enrollment for Education solution with GovConnection, Inc. in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-one cents, and I make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I know that that was a low bid as well. The second recommendation is for the annual contract for network infrastructure equipment and services. Purpose is to establish an annual contract for the purchase of network infrastructure equipment and services. On September 25, 2014, we, as a board, approved the establishment of an annual contract with a company called DataLink Corporation. The services that ultimately were provided by DataLink on the initial projects were not acceptable, and the recommendation at this time is to award this RFP to the vendor that submitted the next best proposal in terms of pricing and vendor qualifications. We discussed this at some length at Management Committee and are comfortable with the recommendation that I'll make, the recommendation of the Management Committee, that the board accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the proposal from CDW Government LLC to establish an annual contract for network infrastructure equipment and services at an amount not to exceed one million, fifty thousand dollars, and I make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The third separate item is a recommendation for the Polsky Theater Active Acoustic Sound or Acoustic System. The purpose of the RFP is for the purchase and installation of an active acoustic system for the Polsky Theater. That theater was designed for drama, and thus the theater reverberation time is relatively low. And I could go into a lot more detail, but I won't. It wouldn't make any sense. But the college, we're now trying to revise the theater so it can be used for other purposes, including suitable for classical music such as chamber orchestra, string quartet, instrumental solos, choral groups, and similar performances. A private donor through the JCC Foundation has provided a gift to support this installation, so this entire proposal will be funded privately, not through college general fund, funds. And so it's a recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the proposal for Professional Audio Designs, Inc. for the Polsky Theater Active Acoustic System in an amount not to exceed three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-six cents, and I make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, 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 and a second, 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 second. Is there any...
Is that reverberation?
That's way too fast.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Trustee Stewart.
Trustee Musil mentioned that this funding is entirely from a private donor and, I guess, wishes to remain somewhat anonymous, but this donor has contributed to this college for a number of years, so this is a very significant donation that he stepped up to do and pay for this. So it is, again, private money paying for this.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The next recommendation has nine different items in it, I believe. Several years ago, we issued an RFP for various services that the college needs, maybe on a monthly or on-call basis. And as I go through them, you'll understand what each of them is. And we usually qualify one or two firms that we can call for, such things as carpentry and architectural services and masonry services. So we're renewing these for another one-year contract. They're all not to exceed amounts. We don't use all that money every year, but when we need it, we have somebody on call that we don't have to go through a lengthy process to identify and qualify. It's a recommendation of the Management Committee that the board accept the recommendation of the administration to approve the renewal of the annual contracts for nine on-call professional services and trades as follows. First, architectural services with HMN Architects and PGAV Architects at a total annual expenditure not to exceed one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Carpentry labor services with Lidl Construction, Inc. and KES Construction, LLC for an annual amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand. Civil engineering services with Cow Valley Engineering, Inc. and Payne &amp; Brockway, PA, total annual expenditure not to exceed fifty thousand. Codes consulting and building inspections with FSC, Inc. and Thackeran Associates, LLC, annual expenditure not to exceed thirty-five thousand. Electrical repairs and installation services with Heritage Electric, LLC and Mark One Electric Company, Inc. at a total annual expenditure not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Landscape architect and design consulting services with Jeffrey L. Bruce and Company and Land Plan Engineering, PA, with total annual expenditure not to exceed thirty-five thousand. MEP engineering services with the Clark-Inerson Partners and Langford &amp; Associates at a total annual expenditure not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand. Structural engineering services with Bob D. Campbell and Company and Walter P. Moore, total annual expenditures not to exceed thirty-five thousand. And masonry inspection and design consulting services at a total amount of expenditure not to exceed seventy-five thousand. I would move for each of those nine annual contracts.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any trustee that chooses to deal with any of them individually or disagrees with a block vote?
Could we ask Mr. Musil to repeat those?
No. We will. The chair will choose not to do that. Trustee Cross?
Yes. Why is it necessary to have these expenditures, I may ask, of the Vice Chair?
Rex is probably here, but if we see a masonry issue or something, rather than going out for a bid proposal and an RFP and trying to qualify somebody, we qualify somebody every four or five years. I'm not sure when the next one will come up. Put proposals out there and look at their qualifications. Pick two entities in each one so that we can go immediately and resolve that issue, whether it's carpentry or masonry or mechanical or whatever. Is that a fair summary, Rex?
That's correct.
It's for a good... It's for speed. We qualify them. We know they're good. We know their pricing, and we believe that they are competitively priced and will respond to us. I assume that if we had a problem during a service year, that would be brought to the Management Committee. We haven't had any with any of these entities, and therefore staff has recommended we renew them for another year.
And Trustee Musil, I believe that it's kind of a running score. As projects come up in each of these areas, then we work with those people. And so this is an annual amount not to exceed. If we ever got to a point to exceed that, it would come back to the trustees for additional, I would guess, is how that works.
And if we identify a significant project that needs to be done, we would go out for a separate request for proposal or bid.
Exactly. I thank the Vice Chair for the explanation, once again proving that he most succinctly can explain these things. And as the son and grandson of a mason, I know that things go wrong, even though when you do a good job. So thank you for that.
Any other questions or discussion?
I like him.
I think... I think that was a compliment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Trustee Musil?
We also received reports from Rachel Lear, our new CEO. I guess she's not new anymore, right, Rachel? Old hat, two months. Regarding budget news and the budget guidelines, we received positive information from the county appraisers office. It indicates that the total taxable value of county real property is expected to increase approximately 7.45 percent. Based on adjustments for delinquencies and other changes, we plan to adjust the budget guidelines for an increase in ad valorem taxes to 6.6 percent. We had 4 percent in the original budget guidelines. That is helpful information because it will offset what we anticipate in reductions in state funding when the legislature is finally finished. As you may recall, we planned for an additional reduction of state aid of additional 5 percent cuts this year, making a total cut from last year of 10 percent. So that the success of this county in creating additional assessed valuation is important to us as we go forward and try to figure out what the budget ought to be for next year, which we will finally adopt in August after several public hearings. We also received a report from Mitch Borders on the college procurement card program, which is for small purchases, and again, ones that need to be made timely, are made by credit cards held by certain authorized folks on campus. We learned about the way those are followed and audited and watched. We received a summary of bids between 25 and $100,000. There's on page six of the board packet. Rex Hayes provided a committee with an update pertaining to facilities projects, which are ongoing, and that is found on page 15 of your board packet. And I don't think I have any more exciting news, Mr. Chair, so I will conclude my report.
I would say thank you, Trustee Musil, again, for the public. We have a number of committee meetings. The Management Committee is one that commits an extensive amount of time to examining these issues in detail. And while it looks like we go through a lot of things very quickly in this board meeting, which we do, I would assure you that, again, a lot of attention has been given to the detail of the decisions that are made here at this meeting. So we appreciate the trustees that serve on the Management Committee and all the other committees for that matter. Are there any questions of Trustee Musil? Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go back to item number seven, the college lobbyist report. Mr. Carter's been busy. Every day is a changing day in Topeka and had some late-developing things this afternoon, and so we're pleased you're here, and thank you for your attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Indeed, we were busy today. The House was on the floor for about four hours today, working the K-12 block grant bill. And they're on a timeline that I think they're still going to be able to meet according to their grand plan, but we'll talk about that here in just a little bit. The legislature did complete their turnaround at the end of February, signaling the end of the first half of the legislative session. And as I've reported off and on for January and February, they've not really taken up a whole lot of bills. There were several technical cleanup-type bills that passed back and forth between the House and the Senate, but this week, we certainly saw a significant increase in the rate of bills that were moving through the process, and some specifically that would pertain to or impact the community college. The... I think that what we'll see as the legislature moves forward, and a lot of this had to do with the action today, will be more movement now on the overall budget, though I don't think the true conversations will really start moving until May, and probably the entire month of May. But today was the first piece in the movement of that. We're also going to see a whole host of tax proposals that come forward from both the Senate and the House committees, and I think we'll see quite a few of those next week. Next week, and then a few days into the week that follows, really are the only days remaining in the normal portion of the session. Legislature then breaks for the month of April. As you'll recall, the Budget Committee's come back at the end of April after the consensus revenue estimating group has met and given their forecast. And then what was historically called the veto session is now when we've been actually developing and working the budget. Because of the significant budget issues this year for the state of Kansas, I think we'll be spending what we're hearing, at least from folks involved close to the process, is most of the month of May and hopefully not into June, but no guarantees. I'd like to touch on a few post-secondary issues that have had hearings or movement this week that we're following closely, and then a couple of things that aren't on the report that have either occurred just today or that will occur in the next day or so or early next week, and then see what types of questions I might be able to answer for you. There were a number of bills heard this week, and these are not in the order of the days in which they were heard, but captured by the report that I've provided to you. I'll start with Senate Bill 193. That is a bill that would require that colleges and universities place on a website the cost of a degree and the cost that could be expected to... the amount an individual could be expected to earn potentially for a said degree once it's completed. That's a bill that was worked, heard, and worked this week in Senate Ways and Means. I believe it was Wednesday that that particular piece of legislation was heard. That is now on general orders in the Senate. I think that there are a number of degrees that we already provide some of that information for, but that would be an issue that we would have to take up moving forward, should that bill make its way through the House or make its way to the governor's desk for a signature. The... Another bill that we're watching closely, and there are three that were discussed yesterday in the House Education Committee, and I'll take them as they appear in the report. Actually, they're a little bit out of order. But one is a bill that would deal with developing developed policies regarding sexual abuse, sexual violence on campus. And another one is a bill that would repeal the in-state tuition practice for children of undocumented immigrants. And then the final one had to do with the... It was the Professor Bill, that you could not use your name or title or institution if in certain publications. With respect to the bill dealing with policies on sexual abuse and violence, the committee tabled that bill as the board- Committee tabled that bill as the Board of Regions responded to a request to demonstrate what policies were already in place for, for that particular issue, and was satisfied with the response from the Board of, of Regions, that campuses already have policies in place to, to deal with those issues. I do believe that we'll see some action or amendments related to the in-state tuition bill for undocumented immigrants. I can't predict specifically what they will be at this point, but we've just heard that there are potentially some out there. They might not even pertain to the bill itself, it might be more of a, an issue related to immigration, and so we're waiting and watching to see what comes from, from that particular bill. The response that was sent back on the Professor Signature Bill, that's just what I'm calling it, that's not the official name, the Committee desired to see some additional information come back, and so I think that they're waiting for some responses from the Board of Regions. There was a concern that, that policies weren't adequate, that were explained by the Board of Regions. And so we'll, we'll continue to monitor that particular bill, but essentially, it, it has to do with, some legislators were not pleased about what some professors wrote about them in some opinion columns, and that's how that bill originated, or at least made its way to the process. Another bill that was heard yesterday had to do with the in-state tuition arrangement for veterans of military, and that bill was passed out of the, it was heard and passed out of the Senate Federal and State Affairs Committee, and, and so that, that will be making its way to general orders and, and most likely to the Governor's Desk very soon. The, I'll touch on one other bill that is important to you, or at least that we've been following, and that's the, the Elections Bill. And I've been reporting on that bill for the past two meetings since the Legislature's been in session. Senate Bill 171 had a hearing in the House on Wednesday. Like I said, we've been very busy this week, just following and keeping track of, of where different pieces are. That bill, as it presently sits, would move the spring elections, and, and community college districts are now included in this piece of legislation from amendments that were made in the Senate. It would move spring elections to the fall. Presently, they're still in the fall of odd-numbered years and kept nonpartisan. There is this piece in there that speaks to the form of government for municipalities, I don't believe that that impacts the college, and there is a piece in there that also speaks to filling vacancies on, on municipal governing bodies. And it, and it would have a window of time that if a vacancy is not filled within forty-five or sixty days, I'd have to go back and look at the, the specific language in the bill, that a special election would be called. That, that particular amendment was made to address a concern brought forward by a Senator from Wyandotte County, where they've had a open position on their city council at the Unified Government for almost two years now. So it's a one-city fix for, but that would impact the entire state as it, as it is for local units of government, and, and I think that you've seen what the process looks like for filling a vacancy on this particular board over the past couple of years, and have been successful. So that, that is still in the bill as it, as it sits. There is an amendment expected from the Chair of the House Elections Committee that would move the elections to the fall of even-numbered years, and purportedly maintain the nonpartisan status of those races at the local level, but move the names of people in those races to the top of the ballot. As you're aware, the fall election of even-numbered years is when the national races occur, we also have statewide races that are, some, some are elected in those years as well, and that would present a very lengthy ballot, especially when you start talking about the number of, of local candidates that, that might be on the ballot for schools, cities, or positions like the community college. And so that is seen, once again, they, they use, the terms are used such as a compromise position. That's a compromise position by people who are certainly supporting or, or moving the legislation forward. I would not consider that a, a term that would be used by other folks that are opposed to moving the, the fall elections, the spring elections, rather. Once again, there is a very small number of folks that were supporting the, the change, quite a few who submitted testimony opposing the, the move from spring to fall. And so we'll see what happens on, my brain's a little awash right now, but when the, when the House Elections Committee meets again, they, they probably would have met today, but the, the debate went long on the, on the House floor, and so that will be at some point next week when, when the Committee takes up those, those issues. Just a couple of other things to update you on. Briefly, the Pensions and Benefits Committee in the House will, is scheduled at least to take up the, the issue of the funding of capers tomorrow. It's a one-point-five-billion-dollar bonding bill that they're, they're looking at taking action on. The Senate passed a, a version that would bond about a billion, one-zero-billion, and that passed the Senate barely, twenty-one to seventeen, that bill is over in the House. So depending on what the House decides to do, it, it could either be on the level of one-point-five-billion in bonding or one-billion in bonding, and likely they'll, they'll put whatever they do in a Senate bill and send it back over so that it can be concurred to and, and not have to go through a lengthy conference committee process, most likely. The, the other thing that I would just mention is that last night, a bill came out, it's about fifty pages long, that we're still going through, and, and this is one of many bills that we'll begin to see related to tax proposals. This one would remove tax exemptions for a number of entities or organizations, and, and it simply just lines through them. How they were chosen, and I don't have the list to enumerate to you right now, but how they were selected or how they were chosen, and the amount of revenue that they produce, I cannot, I cannot tell you today, but that bill just came out. You've heard rumors of the other bills that, that we'll be seeing, one is a transient guest tax bill at the rate of four percent, three-point-five percent of which would go directly to the State General Fund. That bill will, will make its way into the process early next week. We anticipate a sales tax increase bill. The Senate Tax Committee this morning heard a bill that would address or dial back some of the non-revenue, non-wage pass-through income, passive income, rather, which is for LLCs and S Corps. Again, everything is on the table, the, they are looking for a, a great deal of money, as you're aware, to, to fill the, the budget gap, but the first step moved today, and that was the passage of the Block Grant School Bill. I think that sort of sets the cogs in motion for everything else to begin to, to follow through at this point. And then finally, I have attached to the report a tracker that I use to just keep track of the bills that we watch on behalf of the college, and just wanted you to be aware, some of those bills will never go anywhere, some of them don't even pertain to the college, but because of the types of things that happen in Topeka and how they, and how they happen, I just keep eyes on them, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, whether it's items on that list or items from the report.
Dick, while the trustees prepare their questions, I think I heard you say that a bill came through last night of fifty pages, and I think I heard you say that several more bills are, are scheduled to come. Are they bills that have been in the process? I, I guess I'm a little confused with turnaround dates, or are we creating bills on the fly absent the process?
They are bills that are being developed. They will have committee hearings at some point, most likely, or hopefully. I know that there are bill drafts floating around in some circles. I've heard of them, I've not seen them necessarily. We'll, we'll see them once they hit the, the real mix, or when they're introduced or read into the, to the record.
So are they within the process or outside of the process, the legislative process?
Well, they're within the process.
Well, what about turnaround week, and what about all of...
Yeah, the Tax Committee in the Senate, I believe, is exempt, or you introduce a bill through Ways and Means or Federal and State Affairs, and so the bill...
Well, I just, I just find it interesting that we've had a couple of Legislatures now that seem to do things rather quickly, and within a day's time, without proper notification for hearings and input, and yet we're trying to be very transparent. So I, that's why it was, my ignorance is showing, I guess, but I'm concerned a little bit about the quickness, the, the rapidness of creating something and getting it through committee. Any questions of the trustees? Trustee Cross?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Carter, you'd mentioned House Bill 2139. I know it's in committee, is that right? What is the status of that bill?
The bill had a hearing, and it still is in the House Education Committee, and there's been no action as of yet.
One follow-up if I may, or additional question, frankly. Revenues, where were they at for February?
Revenues were, I believe, up about twenty-two million. I believe that the areas where they were up, and I would have to go back and look at, specifically at the memo, there were some upticks briefly in sales tax. I don't know that individual income tax numbers were where they were at the same time last year.
And where does that put us for the year?
That, that number keeps floating around, but we're in the two-eighty range right now, probably for the current year, though some of that was already taken care of with some transfers earlier in, before, before turnaround. I believe that the Governor's already signed. I still don't think the budget's whole yet. I think there's still a, a portion yet to go for the current year.
So revenues are below estimation, and hence the need for the transfers, is that correct?
That's, that's been the practice, yes.
Trustee Musil?
Well, I don't really have questions, as always, but I, I really commend this board for not spending as much time as Topeka does, addressing problems that aren't problems with solutions that won't work, to fix a problem that doesn't exist. But I do, you know, there are a couple of things here, I mean, this bill on public-funded lobbying is an example of that. Anybody that wants to know what we pay Mr. Carter in, in independent contract funds and expenditures for travel and expense, we approve the contract in a public session, and it's available through a public record, is that right, Ms. Wilson?
Yeah.
Okay. And if our President goes up to Topeka to lobby, he submits a reimbursement request for expenses, and that is a public record as well, right?
Yes, everything here is on public record.
So, when you see things about public-funded lobbyists, everybody can find every penny that we spend on that, and this effort to at least either disclose it, or in past years to eliminate it, is simply an effort to make sure that we as a board and you as citizens who care about your community college don't have any voice in Topeka. That's number one. Number two, one of the tax proposals that I think everybody in Johnson County ought to be concerned about is a three-point-five-percent statewide transient guest tax, a tax on hotel bills. The majority of that money would come from Johnson County, it would go to Topeka and it would stay there. It's important to this college because BNSF brings tons of night, room nights to this county for the facility that we share with them, and we partner with them, and their costs would go up three-point-five percent at a minimum on everybody they bring here. That's not insignificant, that's probably tens of thousands of dollars for them. It is millions of dollars out of the Johnson County economy, and it would put us at a disadvantage with every hotel right across the state line. Those are the kind of things that are up there, that is not your responsibility, Dick, and I know the chambers and convention bureaus are looking at it. The last thing on the, on the election move, is there a single local governmental entity that has testified in favor of a need to move those elections?
There have been individual office holders.
Has been an entity that has a, has a body, has a council, a county commission, a school board, a community college that has said, "We want to move these."
I'm not aware of one.
If you remember the November ballot, and waiting in line at the poll, and add to that ballot, all the community colleges, all the water districts, all the school board races, all the mayoral races, all the city council races, all the township board races in smaller counties, that's how big your ballot would be. And, and think about the administrative process of trying to get through in a, in a big county, just getting through the polling place on that. And finally, on the partisan versus nonpartisan, I'll remind our legislators, since I know they watch this and listen to us very carefully, every time it has been on the ballot in Johnson County, but city or the county level, the voters have overwhelmingly said, "We want nonpartisan elections." I assume that our elected representatives will listen to that and remember that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
One quick question, if I may.
Dr. Sobchak and then Trustee Cross.
Sure.
Dick, Senate Bill 171, I appreciate you drafting the testimony to submit in opposition of that, but we elected to go with the KACC, correct?
Correct.
And, and that was submitted as, as planned on Tuesday, I believe.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Carter, I realize you may not be the source for this, but HB 2266, K-BOR has policies in place, can anybody speak to that, what policies they slash we have in place to help abate sexual assault, sexual violence on campuses? I mean, I assume that the bill was tabled for good reasons?
I think probably just about every institution has policies that will impact that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dick, but probably the legislators were unaware of that, and the KBOR was sent out to collect all those policies and submit them to the legislators so they have a better idea of what's already out there. I think when they see that, they'll be very impressed.
And they, like we, have had significant campaigns to help educate the public and deter domestic sexual violence, is that correct?
Um, yeah, they like we, yes, but I think we do so with a, a very high level of quality when you see what we're doing out there with regard to those issues.
Thank you for speaking. We're pretty good at using acronyms and short, shortcuts, and for the benefit, no, no, we all are, Trustee Cross, and K-BOR, Kansas Board of Regions, we, we become familiar with that, and so for the people watching, the fall election bill, we refer to Senate Bill 171, that is the bill of record of fall elections, so when we talk about Senate Bill 171, that's the election bill we're referring to.
And Dick, if I may, one more. There's legislation down with regard to guns and things. What about the exemption that we sign? That is still in, in play for the next couple of years?
It is still in play. The House Federal and State Affairs Committee will hear the Constitutional Carry Bill tomorrow, and I, I'm sorry, I don't recall if I, I know that's on my mind, and I thought I maybe placed it in at least some point of the, of the narrative of the report, maybe I didn't.
SB 45.
SB 45. That bill will have a hearing tomorrow in House Federal and State Affairs. Interestingly, there's, there's been some controversy within, or inside, if you will, the gun rights movement on, on how that bill should proceed. It did move through the Senate swiftly, it had sponsorship that started in the Senate. I believe it may be a more difficult road in the House, and we, yes, the exemptions are still in place.
So if that were to pass, would that exemption still cover that? I mean, would we still be exempted?
I believe that it does, yeah.
Okay.
Trustee, Chair?
That was actually my, my question. The text says you cannot, buildings cannot be prohibited from access, but they would have to be under the Attorney General's rules and regs, and so that still applies as long as we have that exemption for the next eighteen months, is that?
We're about two years away.
I think we're about two.
Is it two years?
December...
Two years and a half.
Two years and a half.
Okay. Okay. So the bill doesn't repeal that part of the... Not, not extracted.
I believe in addition to that, the Attorney General's Office did raise some concerns about Senate Bill 45, and, and I'm not sure how they're being dealt with, or if they're, they will be addressed in, in the form of an amendment. Presently, the bill has not been amended, and I think that's what the proponents are hoping for as it moves through the House. So, again, it still has a, a bit of a ways to go, and probably a little bit more uphill than, than it was in its first portion of its trip.
Trustee Musil, I appreciate your comment about the transient guest tax. Now that I'm retired, I really don't have an official position to speak on behalf of the Overland Park Convention Visitors Bureau, but I will say that the transient guest tax was originally set up for local governmental units to consider that tax on hotels for the purpose of marketing their communities and cities, or for travel tourism product development. And it was set up to be kind of a local control decision as to how they would use those funds, and it's really a, this bill is a good example of eroding a little more of that local authority, that local control to set their tax and use the dollars locally. You're correct that much of that tax revenue comes from Johnson County, actually, Johnson County, Wyandotte County, and Sedgwick County are the three top counties that generate the guest tax for travel and tourism, and, and that's where the significant hotels are. When you, and, and right now, I believe that Overland Parks is about seventeen and a half percent, including the sales tax and guest tax and other taxes, so when you put another four percent on that, and you get over twenty percent tax on your room, then that does become a factor for decision-makers as to whether they'll even come to your community or not when the taxes get that high. So it is one of serious concern for cities and, and CVB, Convention Visitors bureaus that, that rely on the business for economic development. Any other questions of Mr. Carter? Thank you, Mr. Carter, I know you're very busy, and the sessions will get, go...
I know you're very busy and the sessions will get longer at night and start earlier in the morning and maybe go more days than they do, so we're in for quite a ride here till the 1st of whenever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now go to the President's Recommendations for Action, item number nine, Treasures Report. Trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to present the Treasures Report for the month ending January 31, 2015, which can be found on pages 18 to 31. Briefly, here are a few highlights in Section 8 on page 28. Please note that as of January 31, we had a book balance of 112 million with 15.4 million in outstanding encumbrances, leaving us with an unencumbered balance of 96.6 million. State aid payments of 11.2 million were received in January and distributed to the general fund and post-secondary technical fund. Ad velorem distributions of 43.9 million were received in January and distributed to the general fund, special assessment fund, and the capital outlay fund. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits, and it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasures Report for the month ending January 31, 2015, subject to audit, and I would make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Trustee Musil.
I don't want to dominate this, but I think it's an appropriate point. When people hear our unencumbered balance and think, "Man, you have a lot of money," and that's when the legislators say, "Man, you got a lot of money, let's figure out a way to either take it or cut your funding so you have to spend it." Trustee Stewart made the point at our last board meeting, I think, that we need those reserves to weather the downturns in the economy when we are demanded to serve more students. I think we had 3,000 more students during the recession than we did at the start of the recession. And because of good planning and reserves, we were able to do that, serve those students without a tax increase during the recession. And so it's very important that people understand that we are trying to get our reserves up to a level where we, back to where we feel comfortable with them so that we can weather if there's another economic downturn. Those aren't dollars that are just, we just collect because we like to collect them, they're collected for a purpose. And I worry that when Trustee Lindstrom gives that report, somebody thinks we're just setting on huge amounts of money that we're just wasting and we're not. We think about those carefully and we have guidelines that are national guidelines and state guidelines that we look at to see if we're in the right range. So I thought it may be, given that the legislature's out there looking at everybody's reserves and although they're not sweeping them now, they simply cut your funding so you have to spend them, which is the same thing, we ought to make that point to the public.
Trustee Cross.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Trustee Lindstrom and Vice Chair Musil for their leadership on this issue and then also volunteer, if I may, your leadership and the brand spanking new Sobchak administration, when it came aboard, it sat down and briefed me on the complicated nature of our budget, or frankly, budgets. So I would presume that if any legislator had any question about the nature of our finances or budgets, that we would sit down and brief them on that. Is that fair, you say? I see a few of them from time to time and it is a complicated issue and one that I grapple with, but...
In fact, with our legislative breakfast that we have on campus before the session begins, and in addition to that, Dr. Sobchak does invite legislators regularly to the campus to discuss not just budget issues but trends in community college and try to keep them as aware of what we do. In fact, we were complimented very highly last night, not by a legislator but by a regent that thinks very highly of this campus. So, good point, those efforts are ongoing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Lindstrom.
Mr. Chairman, I make the report. First of all, I appreciate Trustee Musil's comments in that regard, but the work is actually done by staff and led by the President, so...
We have, thank you, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the Treasures Report. Is there any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Any questions of Trustee Lindstrom? Thank you, Trustee Lindstrom. Monthly report to the Board, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. I'm going to give another brand spanking new President's Report. And first of all, I'd like to call everyone's attention to the monthly report to the Board dated March 12. 29 pages, very well-written. It represents a lot of great work by members of our faculty and staff here at the college. And it's really kind of fascinating reading, I hope you get a chance to review that. Over the past week, Dr. Korbe and I participated in the League for Innovation Board Meeting, and it was interesting, the theme of the board meeting was the, it was change, much like the ACCT meeting that Dr. Drummond has referred to and Dr. Cook, which was entitled "The Winds of Change." This meeting featured an individual from the Institute for the Future, which is in Palo Alto, and was started about 45 years ago and actually was led by some of the folks involved with the development of the Internet. A couple of things they pointed out were fascinating. One, that by 2022, everyone under 25 years of age will be considered a digital native. You have digital natives and you have digital non-natives, those of us who grew up without having any type of real digital experience. The generation that's on the way up today will be totally, total digital natives. That changes so much for everybody. It is kind of a clarion call for higher ed and for organizations, much like the League, to become relevant. And relevance is something that we all have to aspire to as higher ed is dealing with that every day and also an organization like the League for Innovation. And they do that because of the people they serve are demanding that relevance. If it doesn't happen, those people will go to other organizations and to other schools. So it's a very, very important topic to consider and the League did an outstanding job of introducing that to us. Last night in Topeka, Dr. Cook alluded to the Kansas Board of Regents dinner that was held. They recognized community colleges across the state for their exemplary work. And for your information, this past month, the National Student Clearinghouse Research Center ranked Kansas as the national leader in the percentage of community college students who continue on to get a degree from a four-year institution within six years. The 19 community colleges in Kansas achieved that ranking. The national average is 16.2% of their students. In Kansas, we're at 25.2%, considerably over the national average, hence we received that award. The KBR also recognized accomplishments by community colleges in transfer and articulation, career and technical education, program alignment, and Jerry mentioned earlier, progress with regard to GED through innovative programs like AOK. The evening's program, though, was highlighted by a rousing speech by Dr. Cook in his role as President of the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. Closer to home, closer to home, starting on Tuesday, March 17, the National Girls Division II Basketball Tournament, their national championship, will be held in our gymnasium, the same place where it was held, the first one was held 40 years ago. And that's pretty historic. Our team is seeded third in the lower bracket and their first game is Tuesday at 6:00 PM and they take on the 14th seed Southeast, so that's Tuesday at 6 o'clock PM. Also this past week, the 2015 Existing and Emerging Small Business Awards were presented in the Capitol in Topeka. And we were very fortunate that of the winners, we received two awards. And these were by our clients that work with our SBDC area. And I'll give you those clients. Enhanced Home Care LLC, they specialize in senior in-home care. They received the Existing Business of the Year Award. They work with Alisa Waldman, who's our SBDC consultant. She helped them with marketing strategies. She helped them to secure SBA funding and human resource issues. In five years, that organization has grown from two full-time employees to five. They work with a team of approximately 100 caregivers and they serve over 400 clients since the inception of their business. Another company called Velo and Maps Coffee focused on, they focus on the lost art of building custom bicycle frames and they are in Lenexa. This company worked with John Adisi, our SBDC consultant, on funding sources, a business plan, financial projections, and marketing. Customers praise uniqueness of this shop that has fully embraced social media. The shop has biking gears, bikes, classes on touring, repair and frame building in a friendly atmosphere. So these are two examples of how our college is out there working with small businesses in Johnson County and helping them grow and prosper and hire more people. Lastly, today, we had a celebration on campus, hence the balloons over there, regarding our enrollment growth. As Judy and I attended the conference in Boston and at the state level, we hear of all these community colleges that have experienced enrollment declines, and this is a national trend. Thank you, Trustee Cross. That wasn't in my remarks, but much appreciated. But as we sit and listen to all these other colleges talk about their declines, we experienced a 1.6% growth in head count and a 1.2% growth in credit hours versus a spring ago. And I think that was due to Dr. Korbe, who organized a group that got together and they were able to execute a plan within weeks to be able to implement changes to how we do things on campus that help promote positive enrollment growth. And so everyone in this room and members of faculty and staff should take credit for doing that because they made a major difference. As we were rating, but I want to give you some examples of why this stuff happens. As we were waiting today, a large group of Latha North students walked by us. They were returning from a bioscience wet lab project. They were returning from a bioscience wet lab project in the Rainier Center, and that was set up by Ellen Mulcahy, one of our biology professors. And I have to tell you, the students were really excited as they were walking by us and were asking them, "What are you guys doing on campus?" They were very excited about it. On Tuesday, saw a large group of middle school students touring the campus and they were touring the halls, touring the campus, and these are the students of tomorrow and this is the group that we need to focus on, even those students in, you can take those, home, Trustee Cross, even those students at the middle school level. On Tuesday evening, I walked by the Welcome Center, aka the Krebs Room, and there was Teresa, and this is in the evening, Teresa Leland, who's our Selective Admission Assistant and Lead for Adult Student Recruitment, and Alice Beatty, one of our part-time counselors, leading an orientation session for about 15 potential students. 15 potential student adult learners. They're doing a great job. Every one of these instances represents effort by people on this campus to get students here, to show them what a great place we have, to expose them to our facilities and the people who work here, and that results in those enrollment growth. So hats off to everybody here for getting this job done. And now we're off for the next semester and we'll see if we can grow it even more. So thank you.
Any questions of Dr. Sobchak? I would challenge each of the trustees to pick two or three items out of that 29-page report. We talk a lot about becoming advocates of the college and there's lots of material here that if we would just learn from memory two or three of those, that when we're out in the community, we can talk about those items. It can really help the awareness of what goes on here every day. Trustee Lindstrom.
I did have a question. The company that was recognized, the bicycle company, what was the name of that company?
The name of that...
Velo.
Velo and...
And Maps.
Velo and Maps Coffee.
Coffee?
Coffee. They also have a, they're roasting coffee too.
Okay.
So they've kind of, it just made the anecdote a little bit too complicated, so...
They're delivered on bicycles.
They're kind of expanding their product offerings, yeah.
They're hyper.
Mr. Chair, if I may state, my actions and conduct was a sign of respect to go and get the balloons through humor to congratulate this community's efforts and their accomplishments.
Well, I appreciate that. I think it was a good example of the discipline of our staging crew and video and audio production to keep us straight, so thank you very much for taking care of that. In the report, and I believe we did touch upon this last month, when we recognized Cancelli, baseball coach with the baseball success, but again, I think it's another example, we had the Athletic Academic Night and we have 210 student athletes competing in various teams, and 142 of them were recognized for a 3.0 or better average. And so while we get excited about March Madness, and in this case, the women's basketball team that's playing next week, we still put a high emphasis on academics, and so I applaud everybody that's responsible for that, as well as the academics in all of our programs. Trustee Musil. There are a couple of things in here that, this week, in the last couple of weeks, the Alice program, our on-campus security program that everybody's gone through, was highlighted in a couple of different places in the media, and I think it's, I think we instituted that two years ago, over two years ago?
Longer than that.
So again, the effort to keep this campus secure is exemplary. The other thing I noticed is that the cosmetology, aesthetics, and nail technology students will host an event for Down Syndrome Guild of Greater Kansas City so that participants in the Down Syndrome Guild prom can receive hair, makeup, and nails. And I know we've done that for other high school proms as well for students that couldn't afford to go out and get it done themselves. I think that is as poignant a program as maybe we do on campus here, and I wanted to recognize that for that.
Thank you. Is there any old business? Is there any new business?
We then have reports from Board Liaisons, Faculty Association, Dr. Williams.
Well, good evening. It's a pleasure, as always, to be here to address the Board on behalf of the Faculty Association. And I'll tell you, I had a typed-out, three-page report and I've been X-ing out portions all night because I want to take the time to emphasize just a few things that I think are important to emphasize with the time that I have available to me. Well, you may not be aware, but our time together is drawing to a close. We will hold our FA Officer Elections in April. I'm not running for a fourth term. I will give my last report in April and be stepping up to the podium only to introduce my successor at the May Board Election. And I had written in my notes, kind of to myself, "The last three years have been quite a ride." And for that, if you will humor me, I'll send them back. Also a cause of celebration, because I have to say, I wouldn't have missed a minute of it. And I wouldn't have missed a minute of it, given everything that I've experienced and the way that it had ultimately panned out.
We need balloons at every meeting.
So I think we should. All right, so skipping that part, now I guess I have to ask, I'm sure some of you are wondering now that I'm about to leave, what is it exactly that I do? And so part of what I crossed out actually was a correspondence I had with Dr. Sobchak. Some of my comments really are that question, had to do with conversations that I was informed of regarding FA President Release Time. And so I'll read you just excerpts of that message because it turned out to be fairly lengthy. But some of you know fully well what I do, I'm in your offices probably more than my own. But, "The FA President role places the faculty member who holds it in the unique position to represent faculty interests to the administration and Board. This public face, while important, is a minor component of the duties I perform. The FA President role frequently places one in an awkward position of running interference between faculty colleagues or groups of faculty colleagues and the administration and their peers. But to me, advocacy is perhaps the most difficult but most meaningful aspect of the job, but it takes time, lots of time. I might say as an aside, I met with four faculty members back-to-back to help address an issue in their division right prior to this meeting. So advocacy is it for me. So more time than in most cases, and even the nine hours reassigned time I've enjoyed each semester, as have others for almost a decade. There are many competing and persistent demands on the FA President's time, and there is still the expectation to meet the demands of a faculty member, teaching, class prep, grading, office hours, et cetera, because we do not enjoy a full release as some colleges and high school FA Presidents do. Every week is different and sometimes there's little notice of an issue that must be addressed as soon as possible. I guess I would say every day is different and sometimes there's little notice of an issue that must be addressed and as soon as possible may be my own standard because I've come to appreciate that, particularly with my faculty colleagues. The sooner you get to their issues, the better because you can alleviate a lot of problems and alleviate a lot of stress if those responses are timely and quick. There is rarely any downtime. While the argument can surely be made that the administration and the FA have competing interests, the FA and the administration arguably has many more mutual interests. And it is these that I have tried to focus my energy on." Skip that part. [laughing]. Skip that part. So I guess I would say in sum, there's a lot more I could say and have shared with Dr. Sobchak, but suffice it to say that the FA President is in many respects an ambassador, an oms budman, a counselor, a quasi-administrator and a faculty peer, and their role is well worth the investment that the college makes to secure the outcomes that we have together made over the last 36 years of the FA's existence on this campus. So I'll move on now to some of the items I'd like to feature, which is that faculty are certainly welcoming the arrival of spring break. We look forward to this time as a period of renewal and refreshing and catching up on grading and those sort of things. As you all are also aware, the negotiation team and negotiation research team are working on positions. We'll resume negotiations early in April, and so there will be some thoughtful proposals presented at that time to the board team. Another item, because of the timing of things, is that the Faculty Association has formed a political action committee and has been working respectfully within the boundaries of the college's political action policy, but has crafted, and I believe by now trustee candidates may have already received questions from the committee. We also had the pleasure of trustee candidate Nancy Ingram attending our most recent FA General, FA Meeting in March. I have to say, I warned her ahead of time that that site is a forum for lively discussion, and we did not fail to deliver on that. So trustee candidate Nancy Ingram heard a lot of issues that were on the minds of the faculty, given the agenda items that were made public, and just a reminder that all trustees, all trustee candidates, the public, are welcome to attend these meetings. It's probably the place to get a true appreciation of, again, what's on the mind of the faculty real time. We had very great attendance and lots of great insights shared at that meeting. Our next meeting, by the way, is scheduled April 13th at, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, and CC 234 on our campus. Finally, I'd like to feature an event that's actually coming up early in April. Mark Cowardin is an Assistant Professor of Fine Arts at our college. He will be giving a talk as part of the College Scholar Series. His first presentation open to the public is "There Is No Going Back: The Sculptures of Mark Cowardin." It's at 6:30 PM in the Rainier Center Auditorium and Hudson Auditorium, and his second public lecture is called "Changing the World One Sculpture at a Time, Maybe." And that will take place at 11:00 AM Thursday, April 9th, in the Hudson Auditorium, and it's also free and open to the public. I guess I shouldn't have said finally because there is one other item. I just want to remind the board and the public and viewing audience that there's a link on our JCC home page featuring a counselor and his wife and their son. It's titled "Getting a New Heart," and you've heard about this before. This is Melissa Wells' battle with, or I guess her progression towards a heart transplant. And so there's a lot of information about Melissa and her family. Alex, her husband, is a full-time counselor here in JCC, and Melissa is a part-time counselor at JCC, and their little boy Sebastian, I believe, is approaching one years old. He is, they are certainly working together with the community and the college and those who want to contribute to this fund, and there's a link on the site on the JCC homepage where people can make monetary donations because it's estimated that this transplant will cost $1 million, and that's just the transplant, the operation itself. There's obviously a lot of follow-up care and really a lifetime, lifestyle, you know, challenges associated with having that medical condition. So $1 million cost, and 80% of it will be paid by insurance, so of course they are trying to secure funds for the other 20%. So read the story. It's very, very, very interesting and heartwarming. And to quote Alex, "It's been a fight, I won't lie. It's been a fight." So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Dr. Williams, earlier, Dr. Sobchak said I gave a rousing speech last night. I'm not sure it was rousing, but I did reference two of my fellow trustees and comments that I've heard them make more than once, and I think they both apply to your term as three years as President of the Faculty Association and the commitment you've made. Trustee Lindstrom has said frequently, "To whom much is given, much is expected." And so I challenged the trustees in that meeting last night in our 19 colleges that while we always seek additional something, and usually that's additional revenue and that's additional resources, let's remember we've been blessed with much that we have and a lot is expected of us. You have a lot of talent, you have a lot of passion and leadership, you've always represented your beliefs very strongly, and so your leadership is expected of you, and I would hope your successor. So you've been blessed in that regard. Trustee Musel has a great position about how public policy is set, and I believe that he will say that effective public policy is developed through valued partnerships within communities of all of the players, and that there's a commitment to effective decision-making on behalf of those valued partnerships. And sometimes that decision-making isn't always 100% agreeable by all the parties, but they all have a way of having input. So I've always appreciated how you represent the best interests of the faculty, and I hope our partnership is valued. And even though the end result on all issues that we deal with on this campus, day in and day out with our students, isn't always to the agreement, but you've been given much and much is expected of you. So thank you very much for your service, and we'll look forward to those closing comments in April. Any questions of Dr. Williams? Trustee Cross.
Briefly, Mr. Chair, Dr. Williams, you said, was it Nancy Ingram who's attended?
Yes.
The meeting? She's a trustee candidate?
Trustee candidate, yes.
Have any other of the candidates attended this spring?
No, not.
Nancy Ingram did.
Nancy Ingram did. She attended the whole session, and again, in keeping with the policies that were set by the college, she was allowed to introduce herself, and she was welcome to stay and ask questions and mingle with faculty afterwards if that was, you know, her choosing, but she stayed the entire meeting, took notes.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Williams, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Johnson County Research Triangle, Trustee Musel.
Our next meeting is Monday, April 6th at 7:30 AM at the KU Clinical Research Building off Shawnee Mission Parkway. I am not able to attend, and I will be reaching out to other trustees to see if there's somebody who would like to substitute as a JCC representative at that meeting. At that meeting, we will be discussing a potential RFP for a marketing effort to find a better way to let taxpayers in Johnson County know what they are getting for their 1-8 cent sales tax that goes to KU Edwards Campus, the KU Clinical Research Trials and the K-State Olathe Campus, as well as reviewing the budget items from each of the universities as we do each quarterly meeting.
Any questions of Trustee Musel? KACCt is the next item. We have not met since our last meeting. We'll be meeting at Barton County Community College June 6th and 7th. It will be a meeting of interest. One of the developments that has occurred is, of course, the discussion as to downsize our military. And Fort Riley is right near Barton County Community College, and visiting with their president last night and their trustee chair, about 40% of their students are affiliated with the military in one way or another. And so what happens at Fort Riley and Leavenworth is certainly of interest to our community college population, at least those colleges that are in the neighborhood. We did have a very good meeting last night, and the governor did come by and congratulate the colleges as well for ranking number one in the nation in that regard. And while we're pleased with that, we still have a lot of work to do. If we're going to support the Kansas Board of Regents in their goal of 60% of Kansas residents having some degree of higher ed, either a college certificate or a college degree by 2020, I think we're at about 54% right now, and Chair Kenny Wilk made it very clear that the community colleges are in a position to really impact that number. And I know, Andy, you sit in a lot of those meetings at the Regents and at Affairs, and Dr. Corb you as well are engaged with that. So our college is positioned well. The 19 community colleges are working closely together to make improvements in the transfer of students to higher degrees and as well as take care of students in our own communities. So we're feeling pretty good about the cooperation we have within KACCt. Any questions of KACCt? Foundation, Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Ninth Annual International Dinner will take place tomorrow evening at 5:30, and the event benefits scholarships for international and immigrant students, and the theme is Taste of South Africa. There will be a four-course dinner and live music, and I'm very much looking forward to it. It is tomorrow again at 5:30 in the Cap Fed Room in the Rainier area. The recommendation for the 2015-2016 Foundation Board Slate was presented, will be presented at the Board of Directors meeting on the 24th. We had an introduction of that list at last, on Tuesday nights, Executive Board meeting. The annual employee block party will be Tuesday, March 31st at 2:30, I'm sorry, at 2:00 in Yardley Hall, and this is where we celebrate all of the employees who have donated $24 or more to the foundation. We will celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Performing Arts Series with the announcement of the new season lineup. Faculty and staff are invited, and let's see, they will receive their block at that event. The Foundation would like to invite all the trustees to stop by and celebrate as well.
Thank you. Any questions of Trustee Sharp? We now, thank you very much, we now go to the consent agenda. This is a time on the agenda where we act on a number of routine items. Are there any items that any individual trustee would like to pull off the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would say that within the consent agenda, we have a resignation.
Yes.
And while we always lose...
Everybody glare.
The college always loses when somebody resigns, retires of the historical value and contributions they've made to the campus and to the students in which they serve. But we are receiving the resignation of Patrick Russell Allison. And Patrick, I just learned how to pronounce your last name, and you're leaving. Patrick heads up all of our institutional effectiveness planning and research work and has made the recent presentation at our board retreat a few weeks back, but has always been focused on trends, issues and collecting data, not just to collect it, but how do we effectively use that data to get better at what it is we think we do and what we think we're good at? I had the opportunity to visit with Patrick in Chicago as he was presenting twice there at ACCt, and it was obvious to me that the time was coming when he would be offered an offer he couldn't refuse. And so with that, Dr. Sobchak, if you want to say something additional about that, let me put you on the spot. Patrick's going to a good place, and he's going to be a good ally for us in that place, so.
No, we'd like to thank Patrick and recognize his contributions to the college. And Patrick, how many years have you been here?
Six years.
Six years. So I guess if Trustee Cook says that's of historical significance in being here for only six years, congratulations, because you really showed us new ways of looking at things and kind of helped to get us to the point where we're more focused on data and utilizing data and making decisions. So very much appreciated. You will be missed. Give Bill and Melinda our best when you're there. And if you ever want to take the Foundation jet out here and visit us, you're always welcome to do that. So...
For the public, I guess it's public to say that Patrick has taken a position with the Gates Foundation and will be moving to the Northwest, so we were happy about that. Patrick's been here six years. This May, and I believe it's May 12th through the 15th, if my numbers are correct, will be the Fourth Annual, and that's beyond regional, and I don't remember the exact title, but let's call it a National Research Benchmarking Institute, where Patrick has really led the charge on this, inviting top researchers from all over the country. Community colleges, four-year colleges, I had a chance to sit in on part of that last year, and the Under-Secretary of Education was here for at least a day and a half, maybe two days. And so Patrick has led that charge and is really another example of how Johnson County Community College is positioned in the nation, in this case with research and how we use that data. So thank you very much, Patrick. Appreciate it. Trustee Musel.
Well, I had the opportunity to meet Patrick's wife and his daughters recently, and his wife, if I'm, is a chemist researching at the University of Kansas Medical Center. So we are losing two highly qualified, highly skilled, intellectually gifted people, and our goal is to get you back to Kansas someday. The Gates Foundation is nice, but someday they'll run out of money and you'll need to come home. You will be missed because you not only take data, you take the right data and you analyze it, and then you communicate it in a way that even a board of trustees can understand. So you will be missed.
Thank you. Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just also wanted to echo the comments that are here. When I heard, was it on, it was last week sometime, that Patrick was leaving, I was so upset. And then I found out he was going to the Gates Foundation, and I felt bad for being upset that he was leaving. We can't, you don't, you can't blame someone for taking an opportunity like that. But I do want to thank you for being able to, I translate politics into English, and Patrick was able to take data, higher ed data, very complicated, apples to apples, apples to oranges, and translate it into English, albeit accented English, in a way that the public can understand, too, and put it together in graphs and charts better than Judy. But that it helped us translate to voters and helped us translate to legislators the importance of what we do here, but also in a time when we are required and should be required to justify every dollar, we were able to do that because of what Patrick brought to this team. And so I feel sorry for the person who has to fit into those shoes, but we really wish you all the best and know you will do great work there, and what a blessing to be able to work for such an awesome organization. Kudos, and we'll miss you.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yea.
Motion carries. That brings us to the time on the agenda for executive session. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing consultation with the board's bargaining representation in employer-employee negotiations to protect the public interest in negotiating a fair and equitable contract. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Judy Corb, Barbara Larson, Andy Anderson, Jim Lane, Becky Centlevere, Susan Rider, Tanya Wilson and Melody Rail. The session will last 60 minutes, and no action will be taken during this session. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Musel, seconded by Cross. We will start the executive session at 6:40, according to the clock on the wall in the back. It's about 6:29 and a half. We'll take a 10-minute recess. Thank you. We have just come back from executive session. Executive session was for 60 minutes. We need to extend the executive session, and I would entertain a motion to extend for 20 minutes, beginning at 7:42.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have returned from the extended portion of our executive session. No action was taken. I would ask for a motion to adjourn the March meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.